As a mayor, I would ask that anyone showing any kind of symptoms, they wouldn't go out in the public, whether City Hall or any other public facility. It's, I think, I think if we all keep our heads and exercise common sense, that we can make it through pretty much anything.
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Ms. Williams.
We had talked about that just today as far as making sure people are getting paid. Majority of our employees will most likely be on call anyway. You know, we've got folks at the police farm, which will be here. Should there be an issue with water or sewer, obviously, you know, Jordan and Sammy and guys would have to come in and take care of that. So they gotta be by the phone. We also made sure, started working this week to make sure that we can set up remote access so that AP checks, payroll checks, and that sort of thing continue on. And, you know, people are able to work remotely if needed. So our goal is really to try to minimize that because all of us have bills to pay, you know?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't wanna add.
And I did hear the president's speech today, and he's trying to distribute, I forget how many billions of dollars to help.
A trillion, please change it to a trillion.
Did it? Okay.
The down, the stimulus package.
I mean, people just can't go without their paycheck.
Right. But as, and if you don't mind, also, I know that the state of Georgia itself, they're gonna set out some guidelines to help people, whether it be needing help to pay a water bill, an electric bill, which I know that Georgia Power and, you know, gas like people are helping people. But, you know, to help them, you know, in this state of emergency. The guidelines don't have yet, and once we do have any guidelines to set by the state of Georgia and or by the government, we'll make sure that they get passed through.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
The other policy is updated, we've updated the purchasing and card, credit card policy. And we noticed that it was pretty much out of compliance and out of date. So we have put together a new policy for both the mayor, well, for the mayor, the council, and for employees that would need use of a city credit card to make sure there's checks and balances in place and the proper paperwork is being filed for state compliance within the city. So, and this would help with budgetary issues as well so that when April is doing what she needs to, to make sure that the line items are correct in our budget. And if she can do that, then when our budgets, when our fiscal year is over and it goes to auditing, that, you know, we've already done all of the dotting the i and crossing the t, as they always say. So it's, it's an update on our purchasing policy.
That's great.
Credit card. So basically, I'm asking the council to approve these two policies, which were in their packets.
I'll make a motion to approve both policies.
We have a motion from council available to approve the policies. May I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from council. Crowley, all those in favor? And the motion carries. Next on the agenda is a statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement. Any of you all have had an opportunity to review this?
Maybe we need to table this, it's a lot going on.
Mayor?
Yes.
That is one that we renew every four years, and it allows us to get money from the state for emergencies, disasters.
Oh, okay.
Under the circumstances, it's fine when you're approved.
Yeah. As I understand it, it's not, it's not money that has to be reimbursed. It's money directly to us as part of an emergency management system.
So our, we've been advised by council to approve this, so I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt this statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement.
We have a motion from council Crowley. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second with, from McFarlane. And all those in favor? And the motion carries. The next on the agenda is the first ruling for the tree ordinance.
Mayor, I'd like to postpone this until our next scheduled work session, which I think is April 9th. It might be postponed. I just got this earlier today, and given all the circumstances, I haven't had a chance to read it. And I don't think it's been placed in the legislature's package yet, so I'd like to postpone this until next work session.
Okay, motion to postpone until April 9th session by council available. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by council Crowley. All those in favor? And the motion carries to table this until April 9th session.
Mayor, can I, I wanna clarify one thing.
Yes.
I'm sure everybody's aware of what this emergency management does. Is what it does is, if you all request assistance from a jurisdiction, the agreement may require you to pay for employees and things like that. Likewise, if you're requesting to respond, then that jurisdiction in which you respond will pay for your employees and material. It's kinda like a joint aid agreement, and, but it's something that has ever, for a number of years, the emergency management infrastructure of Georgia has encouraged local governments to enter into these agreements. So it doesn't necessarily entail direct benefits, it may be paid, but it's something I think is important in certain changes.
So you're saying that if we needed extra employees and we got them from, say, Auburn, we paid Auburn's employee hourly.
If they request, it doesn't necessarily require you to, they would have to request. I mean, there's, there's some formality to it, but it's intended to, if you needed, if you need somebody now, you don't have to negotiate with Oakley County or Barrow County or City of Athens to get somebody in now, and you deal with it after.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. At this time, we have Chief Underwood would like to give us an update on our city police department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Basically, the last, last council meeting, we went over about activity reports. Basically, what that is, is calls that we respond to within the city. And so we're gonna start out this month going over that. And what I'm gonna do and combine, January, I'm gonna let you know what January numbers are compared to February numbers. We end the month of March, so the next council meeting, we'll go over that. Incidents, incidents is any type of activity that have taken place that they feel like is lawful and reportable offense. They believe, that may believe that it is offense, and maybe some miscellaneous. We had twenty-eight incident calls in January, February, we had twenty-two. Motor vehicle accidents, we had six accidents and reported accidents in January, and ten motor vehicle accidents in the month of February. And remember, these are the only reports that we receive through dispatch, that we are dispatched to. We get, it's, it's calls that people wait two or three weeks before they even report it. And sometime, there's nothing we can do, probably wait two months. Arrests, okay, we had one arrest in January, three in February. Two males, males versus females. We had zero male arrests in January, two in February. One female arrest in January, one in Feb, and one in February as well. Domestic violence, domestic violence in the month of January, we had zero. This month, we had, February, we had four. Juvenile complaints, January was zero, and February, we had one. Miss Landis reports, there's just people reporting suspicious activities, things that may be going on in the neighborhood. Month of January, we had six, and the month of February, we had six. Traffic stops. We had, in the month of January, we had thirty, month of February, we also had thirty. Citations that was issued. The month of January, we issued nineteen citations, month of February, we issued twenty-two citations. Behind that, warrants, traffic warrants. We had fifteen traffic warrants that we gave out in the month of January, and eleven in the month of February. The general reports that was generated, people that wanted to report offenses of suspicious activity, month of January, we had forty, month of February, we had forty-three. Total miles that the officers driven throughout the month of January was one thousand eight hundred forty-six miles. That's in the state of Stato. In the month of February, we drove one thousand five hundred and sixty-three miles for the month of February. Want to bring up a few things. I received a couple complaints about, a couple of neighborhoods with speed, complaints of drag racing, a lot of muscleers or music or whatever may be. We created a couple months, a couple weeks ago, a neighborhood check sheet. I think I introduced it a while back, like Doottown Road and a couple places like that. And we pay very close attention to that. Once the complaint, a complaint comes in from a neighborhood or from some, a source, we go out, we sit out on it, we write tickets if we see them, we make traffic stops if, if we dare. We have to remember, we operate with a small staff of lawful agencies here, which can consist of maybe one, maybe two officers a shift, but mainly one. We go out to these neighborhoods, we spend a great deal of time in the neighborhoods, as much as we can for one officer. But we're also doing that time where we enforcing traffic, we have to still maintain calls, accidents, utter miscellaneous stuff that we have to handle. So we are out in the neighborhoods, we do hear your complaints. We are constantly working in the neighborhoods to try to reduce some of this, the traffic and the speeding. We try to be in the school zones thirty minutes an hour before time, but a lot of times we may get an accidental three sixteen, Atlanta Highway, which pulls us front. So just bear with us, we're still working with that and trying to increase our manpower as well. I have a press release from the March eighth incident, I'm sure everybody's familiar with, that I'll be passing out here this minute, so everybody, I may cut this for everybody. The press, press release I received from Barrow County Sheriff's Office. The information that you receive will give you somewhat of detailed information, stuff that took place. But also, just remember, at the bottom of it, there's still some ongoing investigation going along with. But to relieve everybody, arrests have been made, but there's other things we're still looking into. So I, I have that, and once I pass that, I'll just, okay. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Chief, my, I have something real quick.
Yes.
A lot of people may hear the numbers and think they're really low, and they are. But with that being said, Allen Johnson retired or resigned, should I say, in December. The chief was hired on in January. I was pulled off the road, placed in an admin position where I train the chief, I'm training Officer Russo. So at any point in time, our patrol units were maybe one or two officers that were working at traffic or answering those calls at one time patrolling. So our numbers, you will see in the coming months, we've hired another gentleman, a lot of the grants, we're getting back to full staff, those numbers will increase, our patrols will increase. And also, what's not being taken account there is Barrow County's courts. We're not getting their numbers as far as the calls they're answering, but we are getting reports as far as what types of calls and keeping us up to date on any assistance that we can offer or take over from them. So those numbers aren't reflected in our report management because we're not on the same system as Barrow County. So just to give a heads up.
I see them a lot.
Yeah, they're kind of months, everything will tend to go up in shape a little bit.
I have something to add.
Yes, sir.
On May.
Yes, sir.
We have a letter here from Mr. Jim Roper, and it's written to the police department on behalf of Officer Russo. Apparently, Officer Russo had pulled over an insurance agent, and the insurance agent wrote this letter on his behalf and said, basically, that his professionalism, his manner, his ability to interact with the public made such an impression on him that he hadn't been, that he's felt compelled enough to write the letter. He felt like that Officer Russo conducted yourself as a veteran, even though you're new to us. And it's just really awesome for us to get some positive feedback from our public safety.
Yes, it is.
The public safety sector of our city is like unbelievable, unbelievable that somebody felt that you pulled over, felt so compelled to write a letter on your behalf. So I appreciate what you're doing, I appreciate the chief for finding all these fine people to put on our police force and getting our, our city back to where it needs to be.
That's very good.
Good job there.
I thought you were it.
As far as the incident on March the eighth, Officer Russo was very, very much involved with and responsible for the apprehension of the suspect on that day. So we'd like to thank you for helping to make the neighborhood safer, and you made our jobs a little easier. So we just had to update the public on, on social media. But our, our police force was very much involved and took care of business, as they say. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
First comment there, I know that, just a small, compared to the, the letter and the application. But a gentleman stopped me the other day, he said that he saw, not once, but multiple times, our police officers actually helping people get their groceries in and out of cars. I think it would come a long way in short period of time, and I appreciate your work there.
Got rid of the cancer, is what happened.
Well, thank you, too.
Thank you.
Y'all cook bread, y'all cook gas and everything?
Oh, on holidays, I cook, with small feet.
Do we have a need for executive? Do I have a motion to go to executive session?
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
Do I have a second? I'll leave the table. I think y'all will turn.
I like the bend of rules.
I'm serious.
And just remember, when Rome was built, it was built by men wearing skirts.
Yeah. I'm not complaining about it, it just makes me look better. Everyone does look better without skirts. I got a button machine. Your office has a girl's roller derby team.
Oh, yeah.
My friend one. Turned me into a button.
That's cool.
I have your wife, is that your wife? Now she holds him up. Not an easy position she's set in, too.
She's not good.
I feel the mower has to get worse before it gets tough. And I think they found the dead body.
Yeah, 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 I'm trying to think how he did that. Or was it serious injury by motor vehicle and reckless driving? But they all damaged the person to the point where they bleed out.
And watch her run.
Yeah, watch her run home, bro.
If she went home, she's bleeding that bad, that's how they tell it, they tell them.
Trail of blood, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, if you're leaving a trail of blood, maybe you shouldn't be going home.
Yeah, you said to follow, huh?
Yeah, too easy to follow, and you might be caught. Isn't it crazy? Crazy?
I think, I'm trying to think of a scenario, this is a guy in an argument, and he hit her with a car, and she hobbled into the house bleeding. Something like that.
Kinda happened in like the driveway, you're saying?
Yeah. Didn't say anything here about being drunk, or anything. And didn't say that, serious injury by motor vehicle. You would think it'd be something like using of a motor vehicle as a weapon.
Not speaker or assor.
Yeah, yeah, so the, when I write the law, sometimes I don't use what we normally think of as language. Actually, but laws are a different language from word of art. And that may be it. But one thing so popular around here is D D Y, drive me to the safe. Curry said, you got the cancer out. Now I'm impressed with you, Chief, you look like a really good guy.
You're part of the chief. What is it, sergeant, lieutenant, and then chief? So this is actually his first chance at being chief, he's got, I guess, to go to chief school. In the next week or so.
I've been telling the joke that, that I was in the other night at the county, but I don't know if that, yeah. The joke is that at some point, you may have to petition the postmaster general to change your zip code because you don't deserve it anymore.
And that you used to be able to, in, well, a long time ago. A friend, a friend of mine lives in Alpharetta, and she's in her seventies. I guess she's had the house for like forty years, and she says she picked her zip code. Four years, I guess, well, you know, I, maybe I've met many people.
Well, four years ago, like me, I should know.
Bieber, Bieber Hogg was just a dirt record. It's like twenty years ago, I think, right? Ah, twenty years ago. Thirty.
Yeah, I, I've read or heard that part of the use of the zip code has to do with the Buck Act. I don't know what the Buck Act is, but if, so you, you put your return address in, your address on something, sent to like the IRS. What you're doing is, by using a zip code, you are saying that you are part of the federal system, that you are like a suburb of the District of Columbia. So some people will put brackets around their zip code.
Yes, you know.
Yeah, and other people will write near, and then they put their zip code. So what you're saying is it's near that, it's a not part of it. I'm not, I'm not in that federal zone. It's like you go into federal, on a federal land, X number of days out of the year, you, they gain some kind of jurisdiction over you. But a lot of this is what people call tin foil hat, conspiracy theory craziness. But some of it holds up, holds true.
Well, you know, at least ten percent of it is based on fact. It's the other nine percent have to determine how much is embellished.
Makes me think of one percent, but don't, don't believe it until it has been officially denied. Why come on here?
There are any more cases. There are even more cases.
Really? That's why.
Okay, you can take this one, I'll see against them. I hope they're not already there, because there is no argument with me. We're going to court.
Yeah, what's St. Patrick's Day without going to the fire and having a drink? Yeah, drink, green beer.
Yeah.
Manhattan used to shut down schools.
Huh?
In New York City, it used to shut, let schools out. New York City used to, used to get off from school.
Oh, man.
Just to celebrate St. Patrick's Day. Every year, we get all wound up, and I put in, somewhere in New York City, there was an album that John Lennon and Yoko Ono did, and it's all these poor IRA songs and all songs about, you know, Ireland, and I get myself all wound up, just into this all day after a big pot of cat before you can have a joint, so, and, because the kid's father was Irish or Italian. So, when I first moved down here, it's like I tried to carry on the tradition because the kids, and I did it, I didn't have anybody to get it to, so I said they'll work with me. Nobody knew what poor music habits was, and nobody knew who John Lennon was. And I came home, and I said...